This meeting come to order? Mayor Protem, do you have any introduction?
No, sir.
Thank you. Invocation be given by Reverend Jay Wiltshire, First Congressional Congregational United Church of Christ, and I'll lead the Pledge of Belief. Let us pray.
We thank you for the opportunity, the privilege of living here in Prescott. Thank you for the beauty of the weather, the climate, all that we enjoy here. Yet at the same time, we know there are challenges always, and so in these days of strife and division, we pray for these your servants, who have given of their time and talent to come and serve this city. We pray that you give them a direction, guidance, wisdom, and all their decision-making, always with an heart toward justice and fairness. And in these days of Thanksgiving, we are reminded that we are blessed to be a blessing.
Amen.
Amen.
We join me in the Pledge of Belief.
The Pledge of Belief to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiskah.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City Manager, do you have any announcements?
No, I do not, sir.
I have one. We have boards, commissions, and committees that do some work for the city. And typically, starting at first of the year, we have some vacancies. People either leave or they reach their expiration term of service. So we're always looking for people that are willing to come in and put in an application. And if you want to do that, would like to serve your city, we'd appreciate that. And you can see city clerk and fill out an application, and we'll review that when it comes time. Thank you. Think we have one proclamation?
Proclaiming, and the agenda says November 28th, but we're going to proclaim November 26th as Small Business Saturday. Neil Sneller, I believe, is here?
Yes.
Small Business Saturday, on its way. This is a proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 26th, 2016. Whereas the government of Prescott, Arizona celebrates our local small business and contributes contributions that they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of American employer firms, creating more than 2/3 of the net new jobs, and generating 46% of private gross domestic product. Congratulations. Whereas small business employs over 55% of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree small businesses contribute positively to local community by supplying jobs and creating tax revenue, and whereas 87% of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, whereas 93% of the consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses, and they value their values to the community, and whereas Prescott, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhood. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas the Prescott Chamber of Commerce has partnered with the Daily Courier for the last seven years to locally promote Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Ober, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2016, as Small Business Saturday. And I'm sure, Neil, you'd like to say so.
I would, and all these people here, I'm going to pass the mic so you can find out who these businesses are. They're the backbone of this community as council, and everyone knows. And it's our responsibility to always support them, not just on Small Business Saturday, but make sure that we don't go online, that we keep our money here in Prescott.
I'm Ray Sola from Mannebager, also the American Express Local Champion, the title they gave me to the City of Prescott. Thank you for supporting Small Business Saturday.
I'm Dawn Ornalis from Joe's Furniture, and I'm very proud to be a small business in this community.
Marla Festinies from Prescott Downtown Antiques.
Rakini Chineri, and this is Cassie. We're from Allen's Flowers in Prescott, since 1914. So thanks for keeping your money local.
Hi, I'm Sarah Murray from Fancy That, and I have my beautiful daughter and husband. So we are the Fancy That family, and we are celebrating, I believe it's 15 years in Prescott, but it's our 32nd Christmas in the retail business. And we have opened up our holiday store on Granite Street. So we are the Arizona Christmas City.
And I'm Mike Daniel with Ability Remodeling and Home Services. And this is what makes our community, is all these small businesses and all these personalities. And that's why I'm proud to be a small business.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Have a good day.
How are you? Good to see you.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item 8A, approval of city contract number 2017-162 with Simpson Norton Corporation for the purchase of one each Toro Pro Core 864 and one each Toro Pro Suite using Hawaii Educational Services Cooperative Incorporated contract pricing in the estimated amount of $43,290.53. Item B, adoption of ordinance number 5011-1549, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a sewer easement dedication from James 110 Investments LLC and abandonment of the sewer easement as recorded in Book 1070, page 277, with the Yavapai County Recorder's Office authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement dedication and abandonment. Item C, acceptance of Arizona Department of Homeland Security grants in the amount of $37,600, and approval to purchase 10 each ballistic vests and 18 each ballistic helmets from XX Tactical LLC for the city's police department SWAT team and Special Operations Bureau. And item D, approval to renew training grant from the Arizona Governor's Office of Children, Youth, and Families for Sexual Assault Training in the amount of $16,900.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, make motion to move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Second. Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, may I make a comment? I just want to thank staff. I know that they're not here today, some of the police department, but I want to thank them for applying and getting these grants. A lot of work goes into getting these grants, and the total was $54,000. That's really a good thing for Prescott. So I appreciate that extra work that they go to do that.
Well, I was there at the time when this grant was approved by the Homeland Security Caucus, Western Region, and I can tell you, I think you're right. It's very difficult to get anything through there. I mean, we turned on a lot of people, both police and fire, but obviously, we want to protect our people as much as possible, and I think this is definitely a worthwhile grant. Brigade agenda?
Item 9A, public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 5010-1548, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Prescott Land Development Code, Article 4, Section 4.9, Downtown Business, Subsection 4.9.3, City and Dimensional Standards, Paragraph B.5, Multifamily Dwelings, and Paragraph F. Minimum Setbacks.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Good afternoon.
This again, we're talking about, again this week, the Downtown Business District, which is shown on the aerial location map on the screen right now. As with many projects that get to you from the planning office, it all begins with private property business owners making a request at one of our initial meetings called Pre-Application Conference. In this particular case, it started out with an applicant requesting to put apartments on his property, which happened to be in the Downtown Business District, on a 7,500-square-foot lot. The applicant was requesting six units. Unfortunately for him, at that time, the zoning code only allowed three units for that 7,500-square-foot lot. Additional units could have been added to the property had the applicant been able to provide site amenities for recreation and open space on the site for those tenants, not for the general public, for those tenants residing there. That was the only way, prior to this amendment coming forward, that additional units could have been added to a 7,500-square-foot lot, which limited it to three units. Since this zoning code has been in place for the Downtown Business District, no one has been able to make it pencil out, so to speak, economically, to have a number of apartments on their lots, which most of them in the Downtown Business District are small. So as part of the applicant's request from pre-application, he asked, well, what if we change the zoning code to eliminate the need for additional units needing to have these recreational amenities that apparently don't work anyway? So we took the idea to the Unified Development Committee, which did make a favorable recommendation to take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission vetted it, as well as with a community meeting that I conducted here in this room, the public came, sent out well over 300 invitations to everybody within the Downtown Business District. And no one spoke opposed to it, although we did get a few letters later that were included in your council packets. The Chamber of Commerce has supported this amendment. The Prescott Downtown Partnership verbally has supported this amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to support this amendment. While we were having these meetings, where the initial effort was to delete these additional requirements to get additional units, a member of the public attending one of our community meetings discussed, well, while you're doing that, why don't you think about these setback requirements? Traditionally, in our Downtown Business District, we know that our setbacks, as you look around downtown, are buildings are right up against other buildings. It's not an uncommon character of the Downtown Business District. We've had applicants recently, as you know, there's a house going up on Montezuma that needed to go for variance for a setback requirement. So this would eliminate that need as well. And we took this request to the Prescott Historic Preservation Commission. They discussed it and felt that it also met the character of the community type of thing for the Downtown Business District. So the Historic Preservation Commission made a favorable recommendation to include this amendment, as well as the initial amendment. So that's where we stand now. I think it's important to note that we're not talking about major apartment complexes. We're talking about three to six units on a 7,500-square-foot lot. We're not talking about 200 units here, 300 units here, six here, three there, four there, that kind of thing. So we're not flooding the downtown with apartment complexes. These are existing lots within the limits of the Downtown Business District. If there's any questions, I'm certainly available.
Question, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 5010-1548.
Second. Have motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Thank you.
Item B, adoption of ordinance number 5015-1553, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Prescott Land Development Code, Article 6, Section 6.12 Signs, deleting tables 6.12.5A, 6.12.5B, 6.12.5C, and 6.12.5D, and replacing them with a new section 6.12.5, amending the language of section 6.12.9 and 6.12.10, and amending table 6.12.14.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an effort that we described to you last meeting, workshop meeting, to talk about why we're approaching the sign code. There were a couple of reasons that triggered that. One was a court case that occurred a year or so ago, Gilbert versus Reed, which made us relook at our codes to make sure that we are in fact conforming to and complying with the First Amendment rights of free speech, as well as those interpretations of the Supreme Court that have come down relating to sign controls. We also looked at the sign code and the complexity of our current sign code and attempted to come up with something that was much simpler and easier for business persons, our staff, and sign companies to deal with. As part of that process, we eliminated the tables, which I showed you an example of last time. Those tables are rather complex and also tend to be content-based, which is one of the things that Gilbert versus Reed said we should not do. So we looked at those aspects of it. We took those steps necessary to make this less complex. It also has the side benefit of granting a slightly larger initial sign to certain businesses, depending on their proximity to the road and the speed of traffic nearby. And one last thing we were attempting to do is to make sure that we followed someone else's models. We didn't try to invent something all around. We looked at sign code representations of proposals and models from the sign industry, from the American Car Association, from the American Planning Association. We took all of those into account in coming up with this proposal for you. With that, I think I went through some of the examples last time. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have today. And I believe we may have representatives of the sign companies. I take it back, we have one representative of local sign companies here who may have comments related to this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
It's all good, George, except for one thing.
What's that?
I've noticed we have a proliferation of banners around town, and some of them look like they have been there forever. I wonder if there's something we can't do about that. In looking at the portion on temporary signs, it seems to me 180 days is an awfully long period of time. 30 days might be more realistic for a temporary sign. And I would like to just prohibit banners altogether because they don't fulfill the purpose of the sign ordinance, part of which is to provide an improved visual environment, control light pollution, and prevent the depreciation of property values within the City of Prescott. I think they are uplight, and they just add to the visual clutter. If we're going to have temporary signs, I think they should be mounted on the face of a structure, if there is one. If it's a freestanding sign, I think there should be a setback from the public right-of-way because most of the banners that I've seen are right on what looks like the edge of the sidewalk, which is probably the public right-of-way. If they were set back, they wouldn't be interfering with the directional signs and traffic control signs, the important things that we need on the street. My two cents.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. All due respect, Gene, I understand your concern about tattered, you know, and falling apart banners. But from my understanding, the banners are for special events, things that aren't normal for that business. And then anything right-of-way or blocking it, there's already something there in the code enforcement that prohibits that anyway. Am I correct in saying that, George?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Just need more code enforcement people.
I just wanted to respond to Greg's comment. The people who put these signs up probably are putting them on their property, but we are right up against the edge. Maybe it is a matter of code enforcement, but it's pushing the envelope.
Right. When you're blocking it, no matter what content it says, if you're blocking the traffic or view, you're doing that with a tree or a bush or whatever, and there's already something on the books that we can remedy that without altering this. But I understand your concern.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 5015-1553.
Second. Have motion, second vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1, Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Next item.
Item C, approval of city contract number 2017-182 with Vintec International for the purchase of seven parking pay stations in an estimated amount of $101,470.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pay stations, currently, we have four pay stations out there at the local locations in the Peabody Trailhead. So in 2010 is when we purchased those. Through the mid-year budget adjustments, it was determined that the parking pay station needed out of the Peabody Trail of North, which is out of side road there, and then doing an additional machine at Watson Lake because of the volume of traffic that goes through there. The current vendor, Digital Payment Technologies, they don't offer the pay stations any longer. So we had to go out to bid for it. We received five bids in the process. Vintec International was the bidder that met all the requirements that we're asking for, which include camping, issuing change, and acceptance of coins and bills. So currently, Vintec has 30 pay stations up in Sedona. That's what we used as a comparison. We went out and looked at the machines. They're a lot faster than the current machines we have. The transaction times are cut way down. Yours for our representatives, when we talked with them, they're pleased with the pay stations and the product support from Vintec International. Currently, the revenues from the kiosks go up every year, so we're trying to stay with that and make this payment as easy as possible for the users. By adding the machine out to E line North, it'll generate some revenues coming in from that. There's budgeted money in the Recreation Services budget as a capital project for this. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Blair?
Thank you. I believe in the machines, you know, pay-to-play, so to speak, and if people are going to recreate, they need to pay for it. My standpoint, how much revenue did we generate this past year from the four that we had?
Based on the revenue from the machines and the items passed, it was $252,780.
For that year?
Correct.
And if it's my understanding, that money goes back into the general fund?
Correct.
And that's a fund that we're sorely missing dollars in to pay our bills. So knowing that those locations, you have those off the top of your head real quick?
So the locations, these pay stations will go to, there'll be two machines at Watson Lake, one at Willow Lake, one at Goldwater Lake, one at the Peabody Trail Sun Dog, and one at the Peabody North, is what we're calling it, out by side road. And then the seventh machine is actually, we're purchasing that in preparation for a future parking lot.
Okay. And so I'll go back and reiterate the fact that these are amenities that we have to pay for. And of course, every time we turn around, we're getting somebody to come in, whether it's a pickleball court, or skate park, or hiking trails, you know, everybody keeps saying, well, it's not that much, it's not that much. But with not that much goes a maintenance cause. And that maintenance cause has caused us to hire three more people over the past five years, which comes with the cost of doing business. And that cost of doing business is to pay for what you use. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Hi. Any idea how much revenue we've lost in the last year or two because the machines have been broken?
Councilwoman Wilcox, I can't answer that to a dollar amount. There's not really a good way to track that. I can't answer with, we get alerts when the machines are having problems, and we respond to those as soon as we can. These machines are Windows-based, the current machines are Window-based machines, so they're a little slower, like a computer, they're a little sluggish at times. That's been part of the problems, along with wireless communications. But we try to get out there as quick as we can to get those. Watson Lake, for example, will staff that booth if we're having machines issues, just to make it quicker for the users.
So that $252,000, bigger you quoted us, probably larger?
If we captured 100% of revenue, I believe it would be yes.
Does Vantec provide a warranty or maintenance service?
They do. The first year warranty is included, and then each additional year is going to cost $895 per machine. The current, just as a comparison, the current machines run us $1,100 a year per machine for the warranty. So this one's a little bit cheaper.
Sounds like we got a good deal.
Councilwoman Orr?
So our current machines, they don't give change, right?
They do give change.
They do, but these will give change.
Yes, they will.
Yeah. I just noticed that when the bids came in, some did not, so.
Yeah, a lot of companies are going to not issuing change, or solely credit cards or stuff, and we believe in the City of Prescott, we give them all avenues to make payments and receive change for the payments.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-182.
Second. Have motion, second vote, please. Next item.
Item D, award of city contract number 2017-172, Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Alarkin Streetscape Improvement Project in the amount of $995,995.95.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
City Council, good afternoon. My name is Steve Oros of Public Works. What we have before you today is a construction award for one of the first of our streetscape projects that are coming out. This is for Alarkin between Sheldon and Gerlee. This project started out as just a simple mill and overlay project to treat the asphalt. When we started looking at the project, we saw some opportunity to make enhancements for pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, landscaping, stormwater quality improvements. So we developed this streetscape project for that. There will be an additional 10 parking spaces in the area when we're done with the project, which is a great benefit. And we went through our normal bid process. We received three bids. Asphalt Paving and Supply was the lowest bid that was received and qualified. The project is supposed to be completed within 120 days, and the notice to proceed and start construction is going to be the second or third week in January. I think it's the week of the 16th, and it'll be done before Memorial Day. There are funds available in the Streets Fund for the project, and I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, this was, if I remember right, this was the one where it's our first pilot street that we're doing everything at once with the streetscaping and the bioswales and organizing the park.
That is correct.
To pull in downtown further, that look and that charm.
Yes.
So I'm happy to see this starting, and then we'll see some more after this, I guess.
That is correct. There's several others that are in the queue coming out first of the year.
Great, thank you. And also, with the way this was designed, it's going to hopefully in the end help remediate some of the TMDL that we're having.
This is one of the first steps. It's going to take several of these biobasins and other measures, but yes, it's the first step.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Shiskah?
Thanks, Mayor. Good afternoon, Steve.
Good afternoon.
Could you, you know, I noticed that you say on here bicycle improvements, pedestrian safe way, can you, our safety, can you explain or fill us in a little more about those things?
Yes. The pedestrian safety improvements, not only are the sidewalks getting cleaned up and such, but at the intersection of Willis and Alarkin, the right in the middle here, the intersection's getting narrowed, because right now, there's both Willis and Alarkin are very wide streets. The idea is to reduce the time that pedestrian is in the street or exposed to vehicles. So we're pulling the intersection tighter and making it more compact, which improves the pedestrian safety. We're also going to be using a stamped concrete crosswalk area, of course, a visual cue that there's a pedestrian crossing, again, enhancing the pedestrian safety. Regarding the bicycles, we're not able to incorporate full bike lanes because of the number of parking spaces there, but we're providing enough room for something called a shero, which is an arrow. a shero, which is an arrow and a bicycle that's painted on the ground, indicating this is the place where bikes are going to be anticipated, so be aware. It's more of a informational area. Also, the travel lane adjacent to the parking area is a little bit wider than the minimum to also provide a little more flexibility for bicycles and vehicles to share the route.
What about landscaping?
There's plenty. We have islands that are planted at the intersections. We have some of the bioswells, I don't have the full streetscape plan in front of me here, but the bioswells at the intersections of Gurley and Sheldon are planted. There's a center median that's going to have some landscaping, and it's minimal, but still some landscaping. We're trying to enhance the parkways where we can a little bit more than what's out there right now, and trying to make it more cohesive design with a huge emphasis on minimal water usage, drought tolerant plants. That's a focus.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Steve, was this project reviewed by the bicy... bicy...
I don't recall if it was exactly on the agenda for that. Councilwoman Orr is indicating...
It was, yeah, okay.
I know Ian, our traffic engineer, has been working closely with the committee and having input on this project.
I want to be sure that the design will safely allow our friend, Sandra Smith, across the street without being cloud over behind some landscaping.
Gene, from my understanding, they brought in bicycle creeks, a lot of native landscaping in town. They brought in a lot of people in this, and just go forward too.
I think it's a great project. I just want to make sure we check with the right people who will actually be on the ground using this. And Pastor Jay, do you have any comments or blessings on this project? Since our church is right on that corner.
Oh, yes, our church sits on the corner of Gurley and Alarkin, and I appreciate you doing this. I think with time, as you do more of these, the city's just going to look better and better, in addition to all the water runoff and other things. I just want to say in addition that we had several community meetings at the church where the representatives were there to answer questions, and they spent a lot of time. And so you should know that they do a good job of making sure that everybody's concerns get heard, and appreciate all of you doing it.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Henry Hatch, Public Works. Just want to add a few things. You've bring some good points, Councilwoman Wilcox. I believe we have met with all partners that we could think of, from Downtown Partnership, with all the people who put the events and make sure the new design does not make things difficult, including our fire station and the police station and the parade people and so forth. The response for all of them has been, and we made some changes accordingly to help out. Everybody is very, very supportive of this. This new design would make it easier. Sandy is, you know, not only that, she's a citizen, but really, she's a good friend with good comments. We gave her all set of plans. She actually was kind enough to drive it around with her wheelchair and came back with good comments, which we incorporated into the whole thing, except two or three people originally were hesitant. I must say that personally, we received hundreds of hundreds of comments. People just cannot wait for this to finish, so we can see how it is. The first of them to come give anything else. So it's a great project. I believe our staff did a good job to put the specs together and go out to bed. The bed is very, very favorable to us. We have the contractor here in case you have questions, because our budget and estimate was a bit more than it is now, so it all worked well.
Councilman Shishkin and I were just sort of chuggling over the dollar amount, because it looks like, you know, we got something on sale for $999 because of all the nines in it. If you say we got a good bid, then.
Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Thank you, I appreciate it. This is a great project, except I do have a little bit of an issue, because I'm sitting up here kind of blind at the fact that I have one page of staff report, and I would have really liked to seen the landscape plan, whether there's park benches in the plan. I'd like to seen the whole scope. We're asking to be voting on something that you hear the questions up here. It would have been relatively nice to have had all those things in the staff report, including the comments in the different departments and the different people that were vetted in the whole process. I don't see that in here as well. So the more informed we are, the easier it makes things go up here. Who did the landscaping plan, knowing that asphalt paving and supply is not a landscaping company?
Yeah, the design was done by a local landscape firm called Landscapes for Life, Steve Morgan.
Okay. If you could, next time, be great to see a plan.
Steve Manjore, do you see any problem with having more information in the future?
No, I think that that's good feedback. If Councilman Blair desires to have that, I'm sure others of you would like to have it as well.
We have people watching TV, and it would be nice to see...
Sure.
A linear picture of what the street is going to look like. I mean, certainly, engineering department's got to approve it to put it in front of us. I'd like to see it as well.
I think in this case, a picture would tell a story, which is what you're looking to do.
Thank you.
Mayor Odom?
Thank you. Just one question, is this the same surface coating on the streets as what we got up in Los Penas? All right. So I just want to make sure that our engineers and our Public Works Department, etc., when they approve this one, we're not going to get the same level of concern with product for a million bucks that we got up in that neighborhood.
This is a paving project, a true asphalt paving project. The other project you're referring to is more of a surface preservation treatment, which is different.
Yeah, just want to put a plug and thank you, Gene, for the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, because Sandra's here every time we meet, and she's, once a month, you know, we have the Bike and Pedestrian, George Sheets is usually there. It's a great committee, and every project that comes goes before that committee. And we have a kind of a hit list that we talk about monthly, about where are we with it, and whether it's traffic, it's bicycle safety, it's people that need disability access. So it's been a really good committee, Mayor, and I thank you for putting that together. And like I said, every month, every project, we go right down the line and look at every one of them. And we mentioned Teresa Ogul, who works with Henry, and she's been really good. I know it's extra duties on them. And also Ian Maddely. So it's a lot more work on top of what they do already, but I think it's been really a good project to help get everything better. It's been good.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an award city contract number 2017-172.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item, please.
Item D, award of city contract number 2017-176, Selectron Technologies Incorporated for use of interactive voice response system software to manage all telephonic inspection requests for building safety, public works, fire, and code enforcement inspection activities in the amount of $181,440, general fund, Streets Fund, wastewater fund, and water fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Gwen Rilich, Public Works analyst. The request is to award a contract to Selectron Technologies for the purchase of an interactive voice response system software. Basically, that's our call-in line for contractors in the community to call and request inspections from the building department, our department, Public Works department, and so on. In 2015, we were notified by our current software vendor that they were purchased by another company called Paymentis. Once we were purchased by Paymentis, we were informed that our annual costs would go up significantly, so we opted to go out for requests for proposals to various companies. We received four proposals for a new IDR system. The Selectron contract is for a three-year period with an option to renew for an additional three-year period. We intend to implement the IDR software alongside of our Acela software system, and because the Acela software system has an online component, our IT department is of the opinion that we will see our IDR usage go down. And if that, in fact, is true, we will not renew the second three-year part of this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilman Blair?
I have a question. Did this product, knowing that it affects our contractors and all the people that do small business in our community, was it test-driven by anybody in the city? Or, I understand going out for a bid, and I understand specific layers of types of product, but usually those products that are in the world of software, we usually, somebody tests them to see if they fit within the community. Did anybody do that?
The city has used the Selectron Technology software in the past. At that time, their costs rose dramatically, and so we sought out another vendor. We've been very happy with Selectron in the past. I have been here during that time. The IDR system, it's basically a call-flow system, so you call, it's as if you're a permit, starts with B, press one, if it starts with E, press two, so on and so forth. So we are very familiar with the Selectron product, and it is a good, basic product for what we're looking for. It doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles, but we're not looking for that.
Simple is good.
It can be very good, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-176.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, that completes the actions that we have for the voting meeting. Now we move into the study session. Item A, please.
Item 10A, presentation and discussion of comprehensive code enforcement service delivery process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'd like to open the discussion about our code enforcement service delivery and some things that staff has looked at in terms of improving the service delivery. Very early on in my tenure here, it was brought to my attention by most of you, if not all of you, that we have a very overworked code enforcement officer who's doing yeoman's work with what he has, but he needs help. And the first, at first blush, the first thought is, well, let's add code enforcement officers, because that seems like the easiest solution. But is it the best solution? And I think there are things that we can do with existing resources that are either in the budget or already on the ground to improve our code enforcement without making the decision right now about adding another officer. I hope that during my tenure here, you'll see that when it comes to adding additional personnel, I'd like to see data-driven decisions. Sometimes what you think you need isn't necessarily what you need. And in this case, it's a little bit analogous to me to a water line that has a clog, and is the answer to make the water line bigger, or is it to get the clog out of the way and route the water a different direction? And I think in this case, what we need to do is talk about getting the clog out of the way and routing the water a different direction. So with that in mind, I'd like to spend a moment or two, if you will, allowing me to act or walk you through a process as if you were a citizen who had a complaint. You have above you how a phone call or an email would be handled under this new plan. We've set aside a local phone number for a 24/7 hotline with a third-party provider, if you're so inclined, that would answer calls, all code calls, whether it was vacation rental associated, silver living home associated, business licensure, just your generic, general, building inspection, long grass, anything. So what you would have is, you would have an entity that would answer your call or complaint regardless of the date or time, and track that information. And then I'm going to skip ahead just a second and come back. Some of the calls will actually be handled quite quickly, specifically the vacation rental call. So what you would have is, the vacation rental call would, the complaint would be made, the host compliance company would have a contact property manager of the vacation rental site, which is part of the registration process that John created in terms of their registration. The company would call the vacation rental property manager, and hopefully what would happen is you would have an immediate response that evening, or that morning, or whatever the nature of the call was, to get the local property manager to bring vacation rental into compliance. So you would have almost the immediacy of response associated with handling vacation rental calls. A lot of those calls are loud music, too many cars parked. If you get the manager to police his or her property, you'd get those out of the pipeline that I described a little earlier. So what you would have for the other ID calls, whether it would be just your generic, general code enforcement calls or issues with silver living homes, the 24-hour hotline company would provide data to an administrative assistant, and I want to thank both Debbie and John for this. They had an administrative assistant half-time each in their departments, and they volunteered to give that up, to have an administrative assistant on staff that would then process the call, put it into a database, so we actually know how many calls we're having, where the calls are located, and would provide you with almost real-time data and access to see what we're doing about the calls, which is another area that I think we really need to improve on, and gets back to whether or not you can justify adding code enforcement officers. Are we having a lot of calls, or now are we handling them? Do we really need another full-time body? So initially, the code enforcement secretary would then process it through a management staff review, which would be Tyler, so he could then route it to the right department to handle the call. See, another thing that I think has fallen on Mike is, a lot of what you do with code enforcement is hand-holding to get compliance. I mean, we rarely go to court, and it's not just us, it's everybody everywhere rarely goes to court. And what you hope is, you can bring people along and along. So under specific areas of expertise, the department heads and their departments are committed to working through their specific areas of expertise to bring people into compliance, i.e. the fire department would work with fire code violations. Trash would be with field and facilities and solid waste. Building code issues would be handled by community development. And then and only then, when they couldn't get somebody workable, would they turn it over to Mike to be the hammer. So basically, instead of adding another pipeline, you basically are trying to get the clogs out of the pipe and leave Mike to do the actual enforcement. That's the concept. It's not a free concept, but it's a heck of a lot cheaper than adding full-time bodies that are code enforcement, especially if you leave those bodies in a law enforcement setting or the police department. You know, I'm going to put them under me, because I think for the time being, we need to show that we're really committed to this, A, but B, I can sort of manage the process and keep an eye on where the money's going and how it's working. Not that it wouldn't happen in the PD, it's just, it'll be closer to the center of the organization and show the commitment that you guys have, I think, to try to solve this problem. So what we would like is to try this, utilize the part-time secretaries, secretary we got from John and Debbie, get the host compliant company, and start to take some inventory of where we're going versus where we've been. Right now, we're 100% reactive. There's no 24/7 interactions. It's all Mike running the rapid day in and day out. The other part of the administrative assistant thing, that it's not just on the intake, it's the sending out the letters to bring people in compliance, it's meeting the legal requirements to send out what you need to and advertise. He needs not just another code enforcement officer, he needs a secretary. And I think in a lot of ways, this is a better plan than just adding a second code enforcement body. You guys have any questions?
Councilman Lozelle?
Michael, thank you for, this is, you know, it may not, or it may work, but it's moving forward.
Appreciate that, sir.
I guess the only concern I have, and I have, I mean, $27,000 without having insurance and unemployment and everything else to pay for somebody to take the calls, the only thing I would ask is, is this a company that hasn't, I mean, other municipalities are using it?
Every, this is something creative that I think staff has pushed the envelope with this company. They do the VRVO, vacation rental. company. They do the VRVO, vacation rental, but we said, if you're going to do that, how would you like us to be the national model for taking on all this stuff? So I think they're offering us a cheaper price because they want us to sort of...
To get into the business.
To get into the business.
And my other question, are they, the people picking up the phone, are they in the United States?
They are. They're in the United States, or at least in North America.
So they can say, hey, that's okay.
Yes, exactly.
Councilwoman Rohr?
Mike, I think this is a great idea. The one thing I really like is the data that will be, because right now, we don't have that.
We don't have that, Billy.
And so it's really important that we know, you know, from watching all the sober living ad hoc committee, we still do not have the data. So this is really good. So one question I have is, everything is pretty much complaint-driven right now, right? What about eyes out there looking to see?
You know, that's an interesting thing, too, that we talked about. And another thing, I give mad props to your staff. We've talked about ideas about putting the solid waste folks, putting hangers on doors, saying, hey, remember, put your garbage pail back. And when you decentralize this and you make everybody somewhat responsible for the things that they should be responsible for, I think there's a desire to take some ownership of doing not proactive enforcement, but proactive reminders, or keeping people cognizant of the things they need to do.
Well, the reason I asked Citizens on Patrol, certainly could be a part of this, as well as now the new fire auxiliary, you know, because I understand when they left the meeting the other day, they were spotting things here. So, no, I think it's a great thing, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Outside the box.
Mayor Brodeur?
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing some of my fellow council, thanks for addressing some of the issues. I do think some of the issues can be well addressed, similar to the previous meeting. Maybe some of the codes and some of the restrictions and some of the garb that the private property owners and business owners and residents have been saddled with. Maybe we can make things easier by getting rid of some of this overreach, and I appreciate you beginning to start on getting rid of some of this, because it's really not in the best interest of the press that to keep hamstringing private property owners, free-market-driven choices and things like this. I really, I really think that that would be a good direction with your leadership, to try and help not only city staff understand, but bring to council things that are listening to what we're trying to get accomplished up here.
I appreciate that, Jim.
Councilwoman Rohr?
Thanks, Mike. This is a great idea. I think it's much more efficient. I have a question about whether or not the system will accept anonymous complaints.
That's a good question, Jim. I would like a name attached to the complaint, but we can definitely have to ask the vendor.
Right now, if they call City Hall, can they do it anonymously?
Yeah, I guess they can.
And if the name, the plaintiff's name is put into the system, that, you know...
Well, there's a tension there, because generally speaking, remember, this is code compliance first, code enforcement second. So ultimately, you know, the whole goal of this is to get, is to bring properties and things into compliance, so we don't have to enforce. The records that this company will keep are public records, even though we won't, we may not have them on-site. In other words, they'll keep them in their database, but it will be subject to public records requests. Now, there's a practice generally that code complaints are, the names are redacted out to protect the person complaining. However, if it gets to an enforcement level, it's always helpful to have the actual person who viewed the violation to, you know, be a witness or to swear up to sort of a complaint, rather than just the code enforcement officer or a city staff person. So that's sort of a case-by-case decision-making will go on, but the practice is usually to redact out the name of the person if they request that, in order to protect that person from any sort of retaliation or reprisal. But we still, we want the name internally for our purposes, so that we actually have a real person who's making a complaint, so that it's not, you know, so the complaint can be sort of verified, and it's not a reprisal in and of itself, you know, somebody calling up anonymously. So we're going to request the name of the person, and probably their address, so that if the staff person needs to go out, or code enforcement needs to go out, so that they can be able to contact that person. And in fact, the code enforcement secretary is going to, part of that function, I think, is to respond to the person making the complaint, to say, hey, here's what we've done based on their complaint. So that person then gets feedback about, my neighbor's yard has six-foot-tall weeds, you know, or there's something, you know, we're going out there. So that, because I think part of the sober living committee complaint is, I don't get a response. And when you, when Mike comes in and gives a report, yeah, I went out to that one, I went out to that one, but he's SO loaded up on his work that he can't get back to the people making the complaint. So we do need, the long answer is, we do want the name and contact information for the person making the complaint, so that we can get back to that person and give them the status report.
One of the problems we have with lots of enforcement is people are hesitant toward something they think might be a violation, don't want to get involved, don't want to be the bad guy, or their reputation. Now, that has come up in our sober living.
Yeah, I think, again, our practice would be, depending on the person making the complaint, if they requested that their name be redacted out of the document that we would provide as a public records request, we would honor that. But again, it's so the staff can get back to the person making the complaint. Now, if an anonymous complaint comes in, it doesn't mean, I don't think it would mean that we'll just ignore it, we still are looking at it, but it's not as helpful having the actual name and contact information of the person making the complaint.
And I'll just say that of all the anonymous notifications I ever received, they've all come in hard copy, either sealed envelope dropped off at the front desk, or somebody mailed something without a return address, or a name inside. So I haven't received any other anonymous notifications any other way. First of all, I think this is a very good idea. I like the way that this has been set up. I think it's going to be more beneficial than the way we've been doing things in the past. I very much like the tracking idea, because I think sometimes we lose track of exactly what complaints we've gotten, what actions we've taken on them, so I think that's important. You know, one of the things that I've asked Michelle to do, the secretary in our office, is that if we get anything that comes in, I won't hurt it. At least send back something to the person who's saying that we received your email or whatever, or vacation, and we're going to give it to staff or something, you know, whatever the action's going to be. Because I think it's important. Some people tell me, did you really get my email, or did you get this notification, did you get this letter? So I think it's important, if we can, to always let people know that we receive their correspondence, no matter how it comes. I think the other thing, too, is a lot of people expect an answer back. Some people don't. Some people say, hey, I've got this problem, I want you to take care of it. You don't need to call me back, I just want it taken care of. But a lot of people do say, you know, I'd like to get a response back. And I think it's important that we look at, who does that correspondence? It sounds to me like the way this is set up, it would be the actual department that it went to. It wouldn't be that code enforcement secretary. All she is doing is managing the database.
And she may give them a heads-up, it's in the system, and it's been sent to John Smith and this department, and then it would be on John Smith's responsibility to keep the citizen involved at where we were in terms of the process.
So then the department heads would send back the final answer to the person making the complaint? Okay. So to bring this forward for action, does this require, to be brought to the voting meeting, or just a consensus right now?
Well, we'll need to bring the contract forward for this, the vacation rental slash code enforcement hotline forward, but the rest of the hiring, all that, can be implemented by the city manager.
Okay.
We're looking at an implementation of the first of the year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments from the council? I'll go ahead and take comments from the public on this, if anybody wishes to.
My name is Daniel Metz, and I live over on Mayor Street. I would just like to make the one comment, that if we have anonymous complaints, it opens up the door for some mischief, because there's no accountability. So, you know, I'm just a little concerned that if we don't encourage people to give a name, so that we can see if, you know, so-and-so is going running around complaining about everybody on the other side of town. Might be nice to know that.
Thank you. Next?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good council. This is an issue, as you know, again, it's very close to my heart here. I think it's imperative we keep this anonymous. This is, in my feeling, along the way of sort of the whistleblower. Keep the name in the office, no problem, but I have several members in my neighborhood group that are elderly women, that have actually suffered many times from, you know, complaining about a sober living home, and then retaliated against. And now they're afraid to even step forward and complain about anything. So as far as that goes, I think it has to be kept anonymous, so that they can feel free. And I think it actually needs to be put in the newspaper, so that it is kept anonymous, or that they know that, so that they can feel free to complain, because we do have some pretty dangerous characters in our area. I had another question on some of the other ordinances, like the blighted homes. How does that get followed up on, and how can we find out about that?
Well, it'll follow the same process. Either the complaint would come either by phone or in person, or through the email. It would be funneled through the code enforcement secretary, and then sent to the department that needed to handle it. In some of those cases, you're probably talking about building inspection, right?
Right. Well, a lot of these things with the VRBOs and the sober living homes, these are things that pop up, and they can be handled fairly quickly. Some of the problems with, you know, the city code ordinances on blighted properties, it's a much longer process.
That's right.
And it's going to need, in some cases, prosecution. Some of these offenders have been longtime repeat offenders.
And I think that that's some of the value of having a database to show it's the same people causing the same blockages in the system that need to be prosecuted. I mean, I asked John the other day how many people we had taken to court, and we didn't take anybody to court last year.
But we took one.
One?
One clean.
But that cleanup took seven years to get them into court?
I've only been here three and a half.
Okay. You know, going along with this...
Well, and just remember that, you know, that there is a tightrope that we walk as staff when it comes to code enforcement, because my understanding is historically in the past, there's been sort of a proactive code enforcement approach, and that had a lot of backlash, because people felt, and the council felt that we were overstepping and, you know, on people's private property rights. So we, you know, we have, the code enforcement issue is a sort of tightrope approach. But, you know, and our codes are, provide some challenges, frankly, when it comes to blighted properties. The one, let's see, Pleasant, this one over from Pleasant, where the fire was.
Virginia.
Virginia Street, where, you know, that's been a, that's been a fight that fire and building have been, you know, fighting with property, and that property burnt out, and they finally knocked down one of the buildings, but I guess there's a couple of other buildings that are blighted. And, you know, our codes aren't that strong when it comes to sort of what a blighted property is, and requiring them, you know, condemning the property and knocking it down and those kinds of things. So, you know, there, it does, it does take time to go through the process, and there's a due process that you have to go through when it comes to, you know, going to court, declaring a property nuisance, going in, cleaning it up, fencing it off, knocking it down. That's all at the city's expense, and our remedy is to leave the property. So we don't get reimbursed that, and it usually comes out of the general fund, you know, we don't get reimbursed that if and, until if and when the property is sold, maybe it could be years down the road. So, you know, we go through a very measured approach when it comes to these kinds of enforcement. We don't, you know, we don't just go out and start filing lawsuits. But, you know, our office is committed to doing that. If we get enough, you know, staff support or staff direction, where the property poses a real health and safety risk, we will go forward and take that on. And even starting the process on the one property we cleaned up, it was a number of months before we could actually get, you know, the court order and be able to go on to the property. So even once you start the court process, it takes a while to go through the process, to go through the court process.
Connie, just to dovetail on that, I think that the way I would look at it, if I was on the other side, is, right now, Mike is responsible for 10 out of 10 calls, okay?
Right.
I think it's safe to say, seven or eight out of 10 can be solved short of going to court. If he has the ability to concentrate on the two out of 10 that are left, and bring the hammer down on them, because the other ones are already taken care of, he can concentrate on the ones you have the most concerns about.
Well, the council, also, and Mr. Palladini, you have to keep in mind the far-reaching, the other problems concerning these blighted. I just came off of 10 months of being on the Economic Advisory Committee. You know, this is part of being a healthy city, and we have to focus on the fact that these are problems, and this is holding our city back. The other thing I would suggest, and I'm not sure if Mike could do it, or somebody from George's office, but I think this is an education process as well. I know plenty of these property owners are elderly. I think if they were, you know, somebody who could sit down and explain to them the process of what they need to do, the cleanup process, who they could call, give them some numbers, help them out, because they do need some help. I know I've got an old man on Virginia, I think he's mentally not well, but when the neighbors got together and went and sat him down and told him, you know, you have a problem with skunks, we all have a problem with skunks, because you have a problem with skunks, and let's do these things, and here's some numbers, and we'll help you out. It was fine, it was taken care of. But we don't have that set up in the city.
No, and I think that's a really good idea. I think as we roll this out, some kind of outreach to say, you know, we're going to start looking at these things closer. Are there things we can do to help you to get into compliance before we start looking at them closer? And I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't think it'd be that hard to do that.
No, and I do want to urge everybody on the council to understand the bigger picture. You know, I don't like government overreach either, but I also don't think it's fair for two or three people on a street that's in transition to ruin it for all the other people that are putting money, increasing the tax base in this town, and trying to make this town shine, and not become, you know, a blighted mess, because it's already known that we have a problem with the natural course of these blighted properties. They become a sober living home, or they become a hangout for, you know, drug addicts, or skunks, in my case, where we've had an abandoned house that's full of skunks. So, you know, it's not good for the city at large. We really need to do something about that. And I don't want to, you know, tell them that they don't have rights, they do have rights, too. But I think in this case, the majority needs to rule, and we've got to take care of some of these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Mayor, council. My name is Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. Just a question about what will be covered under this. Can we talk about snow removal on sidewalks? Because downtown area is fine, but you get out half a mile even from the immediate downtown...
City, I don't know if that's a code enforcement issue. I would have to defer to John. Well, our code does require that the property owner adjacent to the sidewalk is responsible for snow removal and maintenance. Not repair, I mean, generally speaking, not repair, but maintenance and cleanup and snow removal. So our city code, our sidewalk code, does require that. So in theory, it is a code enforcement type issue. Field and facilities is the sort of our primary department that handles our, you know, our snow removal. They have the snow bosses and all that. So if somebody had an issue with snow or ice...
Every year.
In front of a department, in front of a property, they would go through the same process, you know, and it would go to the right department, and they would either go out and, you know, try and get the person to clean, or maybe they, you know, maybe they would provide some snow cleaning, depending on the situation. You know, and Connie brought up the issue, you know, there's nothing, nothing stops the neighbors from helping out the other neighbors either. I mean, it doesn't always take the government to come in and clean up the property, or shovel snow for your neighbor. So if that's something that, you know, somebody who's able-bodied can do for a neighbor, you know, we would certainly encourage that. But if there are hazards, and we know ice is a hazard when you walk on the sidewalk, that would be some... Well, all properties. Yeah, it's not just residential. And, you know, and some, and as we know, is the nature of some properties is it's 24 hours of shade. And that pretty much is ice.
Yes, it is.
And that's going to take some salting or some sand or something to prevent, you know, to prevent the hazard from happening. So, but I know our Field and Facilities Department is, goes out regularly and checks those icy spots, the known ones, and does what it can to try and prevent those from being, you know, that real dangerous slippery location.
Okay, thanks. We've got a couple of comments from the council here. Mayor Proten?
Thank you. Number one, John, thank you for your sensitivity with regards to public health and safety as being a motivating factor. With codes and things that we do with regards to, I don't like the way something looks. You know, we're not going to censor the way people choose to live, or the way they dress, or the way they look. I mean, there's lots of things that I find ably, I can guarantee you. But I don't feel the constitutionally afforded authority to go in and tell somebody, "You got to be something different because I don't like the way you look." And I do appreciate the fact that you're sensitive to the fact that Prescott's not one big homeowners association where people sign the contract. We agreed to give up our freedom to live in your homeowners association. That didn't happen here. Prescott evolved. And we have lots of properties in Prescott that are free properties, so to speak, free from homeowners associated regulations, et cetera, that people didn't give up the freedom in order to live in a homeowners association. And people have a right to do that and God bless them for doing it. There's other people that choose not to. And I don't think, unless it's a public health or safety issue, government has the authority to put on a harm band and stop in there and tell them, "You got to do this, this, or this." Now, some people like to have things that they call wildflowers, that I happen to consider weeds. But, you know what? It's their yard. And unless it's a fire hazard or some other thing that attracts rats, rats are not very healthy, and dog manure, that's not very healthy, things like that, unless, unless there's some overwhelming reason of public health and safety, I think the less government sticks its nose in the private property, the better off this community is. Prescott's not Scottsdale. And it's not other people and people, or other communities, Pouse or something like that. People chose to be here because we're everybody's hometown, not just the handpicked few that we choose to look like, dress like, sound like, or anything else. So just sharing that with you.
Councilwoman Orme?
Yeah, Jim, I appreciate what you're saying. At the same time, I understand what Connie is saying. And she and I have talked about this. It's a balance. It's a balance and there's a sense of pride for Prescott, as far as that we all take proud, pride in our downtown. And, you know, and I understand because I've read what the Economic Development Group, Leadership Advisory Group says about this. So I do think it's important that we pay attention to it. Again, I think it's a balance. I've talked to my Rotary Group, I'm with Son of Rotary, and we have what we are terming like a Betterment Committee. But maybe there are things at service clubs that we create within our city where people on their own say, "You know what? I'm going to go help that neighbor. I'm going to go cut that grass. How can I help you?" My son and daughter lived on a street, daughter-in-law, lived on a street and a guy had a washing machine in front of his yard for a year and a half. And so they finally just went up to the door and said, "Can we take care of that for you?" And they said, "Absolutely." So they got it out of there. And then, "Can we take care of that for you?" "Absolutely." And they got that taken care of. "Can we cut down that dead tree?" "Absolutely." So there are things that we can do as citizens. And I would like to work with you, Connie, and any other service organization. I just think this is a sense of pride that we should have in our town, because I know what you're saying. I walk down some of the streets and I think, "Boy, that's too bad." And I come, I come from a state, Mississippi, where people just throw stuff out of their windows and it just really trashed our state. We cleaned it up, not because the federal government came in and said do it, we did it because of pride. So I think that we have to have that sense of pride in our community and we as a council or as a city, whatever we can do to help spur that along and facilitate some of these things. But I agree, I don't think we go in with a hammer.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments and the approach of what is a good citizen and what is a good neighbor, rather than "I'm the government and I'm here to help." You know what I'm saying?
Okay, I'll take one more public comment.
Mayor, Council, I feel good here in Prescott. As a member of the Sober Living Rehab Home Committee and a Commissioner for the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm very sensitive to code awareness, code compliance, code enforcement. Mr. Lamar, I really like this process. In my professional career in healthcare, evidence-based medicine is usually the standard by which physicians and surgeons change their practices. So having data-driven information to make those kinds of decisions, I think, is very good public policy. What I would like to see is perhaps on a quarterly basis, some reports presented to the council so that the public knows that this process is working, that we're getting our responses, we're getting feedback, and they would have, I think, much more willingness to comply if they know that some of these ordinances are actually being monitored for compliance and enforcement. So I would like to see that.
I think that'd be another value-added suggestion, to keep them abreast of what's going on and to keep the public abreast.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other council comments or questions. We'll move on to the next item.
Item B, Discussion and Direction Regarding Customer Service Training Options to Reinforce a Service-Oriented City Culture.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give Tyler the floor for this. You know, another thing that was brought to my attention very early on, and I think it was through the strategic planning, is how important customer service is to you as a body and you as folks individually. And there are some areas where I think we do a really good job, and there are some areas where I think there's some work to be done. One thing I'm committed to is making sure that staff understand that the way they approach, how affable they are, how knowledge-based they are in terms of their skill set and what they know about the organization. To help people come in and solve problems, you know, send them to the right department is going to be part of what determines merit raises and their success in the organization. But with that being said, I think you need to outline a basis of what your expectations are, because that's only fair. You can't expect people to meet an expectation that has never been verbally explained to them or that they haven't had opportunities to train for. So that's a little bit about what this is. This is more about the affable, approachable customer side. A follow-up that I'd like to look at doing is also a knowledge-based approach where people have a general understanding of what other parts of this same organization do so they can steer people the right way, internal and external customers. But we can talk about that separately. I'll turn it over now to, let Tyler go.
Thank you, Michael. And good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This research and looking into customer service training came about because of the strategic planning sessions. And we wanted to find a good group, a good company that would provide all of those good adjectives that you provided to us during that training, which you can see up there. And after digging in a little bit and researching and contacting some folks, we've come up with the American Management Association, which is a rather large company and you can see they're pretty impressive. Ninety-five percent of Fortune 500 companies partner with them to do some sort of training. And we provide a whole array of training, but we're just trying to tap into the customer service aspect. You can see an example of just a few of the very large companies, GE, Dish, Samsung, Garmin, Mayo Clinic, of who partners with them and who receive some of their customer service training. Thought that was pretty impressive. But looking into further, this would be a one-day standard training. And there are six modules which you can see there, customer service, improving both internal and external customer service, the customer expectations, managing emotions, personality styles, communicating effectively, which is both through telephone, face-to-face, as well as email, all of those things. And then some role plays and putting it all together, a pretty basic stuff. But going on, you can see, this is what they've told us, that they guarantee, this is what they want to have the employees of the city come out knowing and doing, know what customers expect, to deliver better, faster service and increase customer satisfaction, deepen credibility with customers, manage stressful situations better, recognize signals of customer irritation and how to manage those, and assist in quickly finding a workable solution to your customer problems. I know that was a big one that we talked about, and you as a council talked about, improving the process, finding a good yes, finding a way to get it done, and doing it in a way that's pleasing to both sides, and motivate the staff to take on more difficult responsibility. So in your packets, we gave you three options. What we've done here is narrowed it down to two, because one of those options was basically the same as the number two you see on the screen, but it came with less. And so we basically removed it, saying, "Well, that's just not a good option." So what we're bringing to you now is a couple of options they've provided to us. The first being Train the Trainer, where we would have 20 people total getting this customer service training, 10 of those being prepared on a second separate day to become trainers themselves, which they would take proprietary materials, licensed materials, presentations, handouts, et cetera, to the rest of the city employees, which would be done in groups, department by department, most likely. The trainers would be given a leader's guide, and that option is just over $16,000, of which $4,200 would be from the general fund. The second option is a large group training with a Train the Trainer option incorporated. So overall, there'd be 100 employees trained in groups of 20 to 25 people. 10 of those would be trained as Train the Trainers to carry it out to the rest of the organization as we go forward. And that option is, as you can see, is just over $26,000. We've also identified in this process, we budgeted $20,000 for strategic planning, which Barry Aaron's had graciously provided at no cost to his lobbying contracts. So we still have that money available if there was the wish to use it for customer service training, as well as some other one-time savings and some personnel cost savings because of all the transitions and vacant positions. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
That's all my work, guys.
Tyler, would this training be mandatory for all cities?
Well, that's... Yes. Under, either under a Train the Trainer methodology, piecemeal, or the hundred at a clip, yes.
And do you anticipate building in, building in the standards, values, thought in this training in the performance reviews of each...
Yes, ma'am. That's something I said a little earlier, is I feel very strongly that that has to be part of merit raises and their performance evaluations.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Oh, I just want to say, I think it's excellent. You know, this is what we talked about in the strategic planning and we're putting them into action. And I've done a lot of customer service training and when I was in banking, and you assume people know how to do some of these things, and we all know what assume means. And it's really important that the city lays out expectations. And then because that's only fair to employees, because they want to do a good job. And so I think this is a major step for our cities. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a very good start. You know, we've talked before and I've had a lot of, people come up to me and say, you know, "It seems like when we deal with the city, it's not a culture of yes, it's a culture of no, or a culture of, you know, come back some other time." So I think this will start to bring everybody forward on one foot, on the left foot, start out right, and get to where we are in a culture of yes. And, you know, reprovide city services in a huge range and, you know, we need to be responsive and you can't be responsive if you're not providing good customer service. So I support the efforts that you have here, and in particular, the fact that it's going to be part of the process evaluation. So I'm very happy with that. I will take a couple of public comments if there's any better desires.
Okay, if there's no more questions, comments from the council, then we'll move on to the last item.
Item C, Presentation and Discussion of GPREP Funding Options.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is going to be quick and painful. We exhausted every way to try to find an alternative source of money to pay for our contribution to GPREP. And at the end of the day, it does not appear that there's something, and I don't want to push off on legal, because that's not nice, but in general, there's not another legal way to pay for this. Is there?
Maybe illegal.
You know, we talked about exploring different ways, perhaps with, you know, for instance, the bedtacks, you know. But I think the problem is, is that GPREP is sort of the opposite of tourism development. GPREP, the purpose of GPREP is to develop or to attract and retain, you know, industrial or employment-type economic development, not tourism-related. So it really is sort of the opposite of tourism-related or tourism promotion. It's really more employment-type, you know, recruitment. So it doesn't really fall or fit into that, that category of tourism or recreation promotion. I mean, we, you know, we did discuss, well, could it, part of it be paid for by the airport's budget, because a lot of the economic development happens around the airport, but the airport budget is frankly subsidized by the general fund. So it's sort of, you could call it, you know, airport budget-supported, but at the end of the day, it's probably really a general fund support. So, you know, it's one of those decisions, policy decisions, that you ultimately have to make going forward in the future, whether you want to, you know, whether you want Prescott to be included in, you know, as part of GPREP or not. But ultimately, it's really a general fund-type expenditure.
So let me ask, I guess the business license will be basically general fund?
Yeah.
So if we attach it to the business license fee, since it's trying to get more business here, it'll still be coming out of the general fund?
Yeah.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you. Prescott's economic development has depended on tourism for years, whether it be in the motel hotel business, the restaurant business, small businesses that succeed or fail in retail, big box retail, those folks that come here, people that fly in here from all over the planet to do their TV things. In fact, Henry Riddle are transient tourists. They stay here for a year, two, or three, or four, but they come here to get educated and then go somewhere else. John, I have a hard time swallowing as an attorney, instead of finding a way to say, "Here's how I can make it work," we keep hearing, "I can't make it work." I do not agree whatsoever at this particular time, understanding Parker Hall, understanding PSPRS, understanding the financial situation we're in, the general fund, and the fact that public safety has one dedicated source of revenue in this community besides going out soliciting, I don't know, grants and shared revenue, which we've found is not fail-safe. The general fund is taxed to the extreme. I cannot support contributing dollars out of the general fund for this expenditure. That doesn't mean I don't support the expenditure, but find a different way to say we can come up with the dollars. Tourism promotion, parks and recreation development are why this community passed the bedtacks. Tourism promotion doesn't necessarily mean marketing. It means lots of different things. And the seven people that sit up here help define what the word means at a given time. In the best interest of the citizens of Prescott, parks and recreation development doesn't just mean, for example, infrastructure. While it could mean infrastructure, it means other things too. While it could mean infrastructure, it means other things too. And it's the same thing with tourism promotion, having a filthy, smelly town with dog manure on the sidewalks, or vomit in the alleyways, or less than fortunate people hanging around the streets, panhandling, et cetera, is not good tourism promotion. Now, there's ways that you can handle, your observation, I mean bicycle patrols from the police departments, pretty good tourism promotion, because their presence in the downtown area does a lot to promote good tourism. Clean sidewalks does a lot to promote good tourism. And I'm just sorry, I cannot understand how you can sit there and tell us that economic development and jobs does...
Let me make this real clear.
Well, I know you're going to tell me, because you're a lawyer and I'm stupid, and I'm tired of hearing it, John.
You know, first of all, that's very sort of disrespectful to me, because I've never...
Well, I'm sorry, but I've been arguing this point.
And I'm trying to explain that G-Prep, specifically G-Prep is what we're talking about. Their specific charter, as they came up here and presented, was they don't do retail recruitment, they don't do tourism recruitment, they do strictly employment-type recruitment. That's their charter, that's what they do. I'm not talking about general economic development, I'm not talking about whether you can fund some plus-up law enforcement presence in the downtown during the summertime, we're not talking about that, we're talking strictly about funding the G-Prep membership dues. And the G-Prep membership dues, again, I would go back to what, how they presented it, they don't do retail recruitment, they allow, they leave that to the local economic development function. They don't do tourism recruitment, they strictly are employment and light industrial-type business recruitment. That is, again, that is very clearly the opposite of what we're talking about. We're not talking about general kind of economic development, recreation-type services. So, we're talking very specifically, again, narrow about G-Prep, and it just doesn't fit into that bed tax function, which is tourism and recreation promotion and development. It is the opposite of that, it's employment recruitment.
So, John, if you, so to understand you correctly, if they recruited restaurants and hotels, then we could justify some of it?
Perhaps, you know, but again, they don't. And that's just, and that was based on their presentation that they did either this last time or the time before. They are, they, what they do is they recruit employment-type businesses or businesses that come in and bring industrial, light industrial, those manufacturing, those kinds, that's what they look for. That's what they recruit. They don't, they don't do tourism promotion, they don't do recreation, that's not their function. And I'm not telling you that, that's what they're telling us, is that's their function. So, the sort of policy question is, you know, do you want to be part of this regional economic development recruiting for those kinds of manufacturing, industrial-type businesses or not? But at the end of the day, it's not, it's not, you know, whether it comes from general fund or not, it's whether or not you think there's a return on investment from that expenditure for that type of economic development recruiting. The other part of it being the local, you know, our local economic development, or each town or city's local economic development for tourism and for other retail-type businesses.
Councilor Blair?
Confused as always, but we all know Mr. Bertle, Mr. Manager. What is his job description, number one? Number two, are we going to fill his job as a city manager? And number three, does G-Prep tend to want to step in and take that position? I need to know some uncertainties in my mind.
I don't, let me answer the last first. I have got no indication from G-Prep that they want to take over that position. A few of the things I've thought about, and this needs to be a decision you guys make, and I'd be glad to put some recommendations together and look at different models. Do we want to have an economic development in-house, or do we want to look at contracting out for our economic development service positions? I don't know that we know that. I don't think, we haven't really had a tremendous amount of dialogue about it, because Jeff isn't leaving until the first of the year, and this has just come to light now. I mean, one of the things that I've been saying to a lot of people is, G-Prep's looking for an executive director, the chamber's looking for an executive director, we're looking for an economic initiatives director. Do we need to have a more comprehensive look at what this community's doing for economic development?
I guess that's my point. What is, what is the job description of economic development when it comes to Prescott, Arizona? Is it tourism, as Mr. Laberson?
I would think the director for the city of Prescott is responsible for both tourism and the other manufacturing and economic development. Yes, I think it's part and parcel, tourism is.
To the economic development, yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Monroe?
Well, I understand where John's coming from, in that we heard over and over again that G-Prep is about finding business to come here and base jobs. They talk about base jobs all the time. And then, and even their yardstick was the issue, the jobs that they felt that they brought to Prescott because of their efforts. I believe that it's for this $40,000 to come out of general fund, I think is a return on investment to our general fund, because jobs come here, people move here, they have work, it is just a very positive thing for our community, and without those jobs, so I mean, I can see why it should not be tied to bed tax. And because it is about jobs, it is about economic development, even though our economy is 40% tourism, I understand that, but G-Prep specifically is for base jobs and throwing the big net, getting people to come look at this region, and I think the return on investment out of the, out of our general fund, the $40,000 is certainly money well-spent. I do, let me add, though, I do like the idea that Michael has about looking at a different model. So, maybe it's not economic development like we've done it in the past, and in combination with G-Prep. And the chamber, and I said this to Michael, the chamber's different in that they're a membership group, and they're about membership. And we're talking about bringing people in here that will employ and bring jobs to Prescott.
Counselor Monroe, welcome.
Well, I agree with Billy that this is a good investment of the general, does return a lot more than just $40,000. Well, I don't have a problem using the general fund, but I want to ask John, just so I know you cover base, could we possibly use water, sewer funds, any port, premise, that, or dogs, more volume, economy of...
I think that probably not streets, but, you know, let me give you an analogy, which is something I think we mentioned before, is that a lot of the regional, around the country, most and many of the regional economic development groups are funded by the power companies, by the utility companies, the electric companies, because they're looking for manufacturers and industrial-type users to come in, because they're power users. So, I guess by analogy, you could say that if you bring in a manufacturer or industrial, light industrial-type user, that it adds customers, customers to our customer base for water, sewer, and perhaps solid waste. Solid waste's a little iffy, because we don't have a monopoly on anything but residential, basically. In other words, you can go out and shop around for industrial, solid waste services. So, perhaps some of it could come out of the water, sewer funding, so that that's an option going forward in the future. You know, we want to be careful, because we've had, you know, long before any of us were ever on the council, I think we have, we have had done economic development with a high water user and a high sewer user, and that sort of hasn't turned out all that great, you know, in the short term, although it's getting resolved. But, so, yeah, in theory, I think going forward, you know, future budget years, I think this year, it is budgeted in the general fund, but going forward, perhaps, you know, if you look at it from a building your customer base for water and sewer and perhaps solid waste, part of the funding for something like G-Prep, that employment-type economic development, manufacture could come partially out of those types of funds.
Counselor Chisca?
Thank you, Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we vote on this?
Yes, it has been. The funding was voted on, and I believe it's been brought back because he wanted to know the options for funding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that, that we weren't still debating whether we were going to approve the G-Prep budget. As I recall, we agreed that on the budget, we were just asking for options on where we would actually pay for it from, and that's what we're doing now, is looking at the options. And we're still looking. Okay.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you. John, here again, thank you for being more open-minded, that we might be able to look at different funds. My objection isn't just the $40,000. We know it's a good thing to do, and it's real, it's hard to say the greater Prescott area in Prescott not being bought. That makes no sense at all. Question is, is understanding the challenges we're facing right now in our stabilization of police and fire funding. We need to try everything possible we can not to keep tapping the general fund, knowing that we're going to have to face the uphill battle here really quickly, sooner than later, with regards to how we're going to address our indebtedness and keep our police and fire departments whole as the general fund keeps getting tapped to pay off this fee and this fee and this fee. And my frustration comes in that I'm trying to look for a little more creative financing, so to speak, in how to address some of the amenities. You know, there's certain things we have to have, and there's certain things we'd like to have, and the have-tos at this particular point, from my thought process, are life essential services, and police and fire are right at the top of that list. So, I didn't mean to be disrespectful. So, that wasn't my intent. My intent was to demonstrate my frustration with this conversation, because it's been ongoing for a while. So, working on that, I hope you understand.
Right, and I think as, again, as we go forward into the next budget year, which basically starts in January, right, Martin, start rolling into budget, you know, part of what could be looked at in terms of rate structure for water and sewer is a, and it's probably relatively, I don't even know if it fits into the current rate structure, but some, you know, charge across to all users for economic development, you know, and maybe it's maybe literally pennies, you know, to help fund a G-Prep-type activity, because it brings more water, sewer users into, you know, your base customer. So, that's a, you know, an idea that certainly could be looked at as far as whether it fits into the water, sewer rate structure, perhaps even solid waste, you know, something we just have to, I don't think I have, we have an answer, but certainly we could look at that, because if you have, again, you know, there's an economy of scale to, and so, those are things that could be looked at for future funding of G-Prep. This year, we're really kind of boxed into where in the general fund or sort of associated funds, not those enterprise funds, can we fund G-Prep?
Counselor Monroe?
So, it appears, Michael, that you've found, you have a solution or you have a recommendation in terms of funding G-Prep for FY '17, we will utilize salary savings from both the soon-to-be vacant deputy city manager and the economic initiatives director.
Yes.
So, for this year...
We can find it in the general fund.
Out of...
Out of salary savings.
Things that were not...
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Blair?
Well, it seems to me we have a problem with how the themes are structured when it comes right down to us wanting to use money out of the Parks and Recreation impact fee, because we don't have a general, a general topic that circles around a master plan from Parks and Recreation that includes all-inclusive things, so it doesn't violate what our attorney looks at. In other words, this is the same scenario. If G-Prep said, "We are here to provide economic incentives as well as job creations through tourism and every avenue for our communities," then you could probably use the bed tax money. But because of the way it's structured, and because of the way John just said it was presented by G-Prep, it handcuffs us once again from using those tools. So, with that said, here's two things that I've heard in the last three weeks, two months, is the fact we can't use certain funds that are really kind of locked up in that proverbial box through Parks and Recreation master plan, because we have not rewritten our master plan, and we need to, because it hadn't been done since 2007. Therefore, we can get into that locked box, we can get into that locked box again if G-Prep rewrote their mission statement. So, if we're handcuffed based upon what the city attorney's telling us, then we tell the people that are handcuffing us out there to unhandcuff. Just a thought. There's always a way around the corner if you look far enough around it.
Counselor Gonzalez?
I just have a comment kind of beyond the scope of funding. We were talking about data-driven decisions. In the next budget year, I'd like to see some data to make this decision justifiable. I don't care what the name is, whether it's Prescott Greater, I'd like to know that $40,000 or now it'll be $160,000, we give them, where's that return on investment with data? That's what I'd like to see.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Okay, appears to me that you have an option here of utilizing funding from Deputy City Manager, the E.I. Director position. So, I think this is something we need to bring back.
No, I think we're good. Councilman Blair's comments struck an idea with me, and I don't, and I would need some consensus from you guys in general agreement. I'm going to sit on the executive director search for G-Prep. Do we want to say to G-Prep, "We'd like some part of your overall scope of what you're looking at to include tourism"? Do we...
Absolutely. This isn't just about us spending money to build a Prescott family. It's about promoting the city of Prescott.
We certainly could take the position, we'd like them to look at that as part of their larger mission, not changing what they're doing, but, you know, remember what got you here type concept. I mean, I certainly could share that with them if you're interested in that, and that would maybe open the door.
Well, it's butts in the bed. I mean, Dane's out there, he owns a hotel. You know, here's a guy that's chairman of the board, part of his livelihood, maybe the major part of it is tourism and his hotels. So, if it makes no sense to anybody, let's walk away from it, but to me, it makes a lot of sense, because that's part of their livelihood.
I think you ought to advance the concept with them, see what they say. All right, that's the last item that we have. I want to thank everybody for coming today, and, well, I guess I've got a couple more comments here, I'm sorry. We're not done yet.
Counselor Chisca?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Michael, I was on the group that incubated G-Prep, and at the time, we went through the same, do we do tourism, what do we do? The truth of the matter is, is that if you do tourism, you're doing tourism for the city of Prescott. It's a regional organization. I don't know how they would promote tourism for a region, for the region. Maybe that's because we're talking about semantics, and because tourism would be in there somewhere in their mission statement, we could justify that situation. But realistically, I think we'd be really, really, really stretching it if we did that. And they could not, and probably would not, go that direction. You know, I just had to say that, because that's, that's not what they do. And if we said, "Okay, for your $40,000, that's what you're going to have to do," I just think that that would be sending them off on a mission that they absolutely could not fulfill.
I appreciate your comments, and that may be the case, I just was throwing it out there as an idea.
I totally understand that situation, but to try and craft it around something in their mission statement is ridiculous, I think.
I'm not so sure about that. Let's just say the Coyotes want to come to Prescott, Arizona, G-Prep brought them in, bring jobs in a new building and everything else, that's tourism as well. So, I disagree with you, I think it's a mixture of both.
Counselor Monroe?
I guess I just, I have to say this because of sitting on the tourism committee. I know they're very concerned about nickel-and-dimey, the bed tax... I know they're very concerned about nickel-and-dining the bed tax because the bed tax is all they have to work with to bring tourists to our area. So I think as a council, we need to be very careful, and I guess when that, when that proposition was agreed upon for the bed tax, it was pretty right. However, I will just tell you, I know that the Tourism Advisory Committee is very concerned about using their funds for anything other than bringing tourists here. I just want to say, I think that that's, I need to say that because that's pretty...
And I need to say, then I should expect that the Tourism Advisory Committee would look at funding Hope Fest in Prescott, Arizona.
Well, I can tell you, some of them did not vote for that, excuse me.
That's not my point, the point is, you can stretch it one way and you can, you can stretch it the other way, but let's not criticize one and not criticize the other end.
And that's all on their radar, believe me, I think that's very clear.
Who started?
Well, they want to bring tourists, that's all we...
Yeah, but nobody wants to let go of their money here, and that's my aggravation. Here we have a chance, just like you say, to know that that $40,000 for G-Prep will bring an extra money into the general fund. Anything I'm talking about here, using the bed tax money regardless of how you pencil it, whether Steve's saying a different thing or you're saying a different thing, it all brings people to the region, it all benefits us, and we can't draw a line in the sand of which is better than the other.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, I kind of agree with Blair down here, simply because we hold a rodeo in the city limits of Prescott, doesn't mean it doesn't benefit everybody in the region, or simply because they built the event center out in Prescott Valley, doesn't mean it doesn't benefit everybody in the region. And not everybody that enjoys both those venues lives either in the city of Prescott or into Prescott Valley. Fact of the matter is, both those create jobs, both those create economic development, both those promote regional tourism, both of those things are intertwined, I mean, we're one regional community, it's just like the airport, it's not one airport simply because it's located in the city of Prescott, it's not restricted to only the use of the city of Prescott, you have people flying in here all over, and if they do come here for the ball tournaments, if they do come here for some of the things that they're trying to get out there at the event center out in Prescott Valley, you know what? Guys are going to stay in hotels all over the region, they're going to eat in the restaurants, they're going to shop in the various different stores. The fact of the matter is, is that when we're trying to find legitimate uses of the limited amounts of dollars that we have to use for different things, we need to be very creative in how we approach this topic. Rather than saying no all the time, how do you open the door? What do you do that would create a mechanism for doing this? Right now, we're significantly challenged in the city of Prescott, more so than other communities to some degree because of the PSPRS deal. There are things that we have to look at with being very sensitive as to what we do with that general fund, are there other areas that we can look in the toolbox to see how we can keep the boat afloat rather than shooting ourselves in the foot? That's my comments.
We need to go to sensitivity training.
Oh, yeah, I really feel stressed out since the election and all.
Okay, I don't know who brought this up on the calendar, but anyway.
I apologize profusely.
Okay, I think we can move forward on this, any other questions, comments? I thought I had that finished last time, then all of a sudden, my board lit up here, so, anyway, my final comment, thanks to everybody for coming, and I like to always end with a little political note or something from our forefathers. This is by H.L. Minchin. The whole aim of practical politics is to keep the populace alarmed and hence clamor us to be led to safety by mincing it with an endless series of hobgoblins, all of them imaginary. Thank you.